A quorum being present, the special town meeting will come to order. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise. Reverend Luther Ziegler of Emmanuel Church will give the invocation, and I ask that you remain standing after the invocation to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this town, for its people, for giving us such a beautiful place in which to live and to work. As we gather tonight to tend to the business of our common life, open our hearts so that we may listen carefully and attentively, help us to speak the truth to one another, guide us in our decision-making. All these things we pray in the name of the Holy One who keeps calling us into healthier and better ways of living together. Amen.
Thank you, Luther. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'll briefly state our customary housekeeping and procedural points. If you want to speak, please wait to be recognized, wait for a mic, and give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. And for those who are here for the first time, I'm Alan Wilson. I ask that you stand when you speak if you can, and this applies to town officials at the front as well as to those on the floor of the meeting. Speakers should remember to address their remarks to me as moderator and not to other town officials or voters. Speakers must limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they receive my permission to speak longer. That is a new rule that I'm introducing tonight, and keep in mind that Town Clerk Denise Samelczuk will be running her stopwatch. The seats on the floor of the gym are reserved for voters. If you're not a voter and not one of the people who've received my permission to be here in order to speak, you should be seated in the bleachers. If you are a voter and are sitting in the bleachers, you should move to a seat on the floor because I won't call on those in the bleachers. My intention is to call on every voter who desires to speak on an issue before the meeting. But if a motion for the previous question, that's the motion to cut off debate, is properly introduced and seconded, under the rules we follow, it is not debatable. I'll call directly for a vote without further discussion. And I'll accept the motion for the previous question only when a voter rises and is recognized solely for that purpose. I won't accept it from one who makes a statement on the merits and then immediately moves to close the door on contrary views. You should have picked up a red card like this as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. Most matters require a majority vote. The motion for the previous question requires a two-thirds vote, and by state law, amending the zoning bylaw also requires a two-thirds vote. Certain other questions require two-thirds or in some cases, a greater proportion, and I'll explain those if they arise. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterspiel, Town Administrator, heads of town departments who are available to answer questions, Sue Brown, Town Planner, Paul Orlando, the Building Inspector, and Michelle Randazzo, Town Counsel. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if it becomes appropriate. Tom Murphy, the moderator of Ipswich, is also here this evening because Ipswich is considering introducing electronic voting, and Tom wanted to see it in action. Tom, where are you? There's Tom. Please welcome Tom. Once we've established a quorum, as we now have, I'll assume a quorum continues to be present until it's challenged and found lacking by the tellers' count. The procedures we follow reflect provisions of the Massachusetts Acts and General Laws, Article 2 of the town's general bylaw, a book called Town Meeting Time and Traditions of the Town. It's unlawful to smoke in the school or elsewhere on school grounds. I ask that you mute or turn off cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by Cape Ann TV and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who were serving as volunteers tonight. The registrars of voters, Eileen Buckley, Gary Justo, and Bruce Warren; assisting the registrars in checking in voters, Linda Feuerbach, Rebecca Jakes, Carolyn Kelly, Lee Simmons, and Allison Anhold White; the tellers are Michelle Behr, Nancy Hammond, Beth Heisey, Kathy Ryan, and Pamela Thorne; and assisting with any headset problems for electronic voting, which we certainly don't anticipate, Harbor Master Bayon Pike. Thank you all for serving the town. Town Clerk Denise Samelczuk has announced her retirement effective at the end of this year. It has been my pleasure to work with Denise as town clerk for the last eight years. No town employee has a more diverse portfolio of responsibilities than the clerk, from custodian of official records to registrar of voters to issuer of beach stickers to parking clerk and many others. In my work with her, her oversight of elections and her management of the logistics for town meetings are the ones that have mattered most to me. Her professionalism, knowledge, and attention to detail have meant that I never had to think about these critical functions, confident in the knowledge that she had them all in hand. I ask that the meeting join me in thanking Denise for her years of service to Manchester and its residents. Town Administrator Greg Fetterspiel has just reminded me that Chief of Police Ed Connolly is present and will probably be able to speak or want to speak, and Chris Bertoni, the conservation agent, as well, so we'll add them to the list of non-residents who have my permission to be here. I now recognize Eli Bowling, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, for preliminary remarks.
Good evening, and thanks for coming to the special town meeting. This meeting represents a bit of a departure from past town meeting practice. Usually, the town holds one annual town meeting in April and conducts all of its legislative business for the year, including budgeting and bylaw changes in that one meeting. Special town meetings have in the past been reserved for unforeseen occurrences such as water or sewer emergencies, the required spending outside limits set for us in law, or for major decisions that merited a separate meeting, such as the authorization of the Manchester Essex High School building project. For the past couple of years, the Board of Selectmen has been considering whether or not to add a second, more regular town meeting to the schedule. Some of the other towns already do this, sometimes splitting the meetings into one dedicated to spending authorizations and one to bylaw updates and miscellaneous other articles. This can have the advantage of reducing the strain on the town boards to produce both budget and bylaw changes in a compressed cycle in one half of the year and potentially improving debate on articles by reducing the length of time that everyone must spend at one meeting. This spring, it became apparent that we had a number of potential articles for the warrant that simply were not ready to be presented. This is unfortunate because under our irregular schedules, we would not be able to take them up for another year, and in some cases, issues that were the subject of the articles had already been put off for some time. So we made a decision back in March to inject this special town meeting in part to deal with articles that weren't ready for the spring, and at the same time, using it as a testing ground to see if the town could and should look to a more regular meeting in the fall. We look forward to your comments regarding this concept. Tonight, we ask you to consider an array of changes to our bylaws, some rather mundane and some potentially having considerable impact on the town and residents. We hope, as always, to enjoy varied wisdom from you, the legislative body of the town. And finally, before we begin, again, same as the town moderator, I'd like to recognize Denise Samelczuk, our town clerk. This will be her last town meeting. Denise has served the town well, and we will miss her steady hand at elections and town meetings as well as behind the desk at Town Hall.
Thank you, Eli. You should have found a copy of the warrant on your chair. There are also handouts available from the Conservation Commission on Article 5 and the Animal Control Board on Article 8. If you don't have all of these, please raise your hand, and one of the tellers will give you what you need. As I hope you all know, we'll be voting electronically for the second time at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this as you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes except those for which I determined that a voice vote would be more efficient and save us some time. Although the keypad has an identification number linked to the name of the voter who received it, that link resides only on the server used for check-in. The check-in server communicates with the computer that tabulates the votes, but the server tells the tabulating computer only the numbers of the handsets issued and not the identity of the voters using them. So each individual's vote is therefore entirely private. When the voting period for each motion opens, the green light to my left will illuminate, and you'll have 15 seconds to vote. Press 1 to vote yes and 2 to vote no on that motion. If you change your mind, you can just press the other button. The computer only records your last choice. And if you want to abstain, don't press any button. Or if you've already recorded a yes or a no, press 3, and 3 will clear the previous choice. After you vote, the handset will display yes received or no received on the screen on your handset to confirm that your vote was counted. Does anyone have any questions about the handsets? Yes, ma'am. Would you wait for a mic, please?
Mary Palermo, Parsons Lane. I just have a clarification. So if I want to vote yes, I press 1. If I want to vote 2, I press no.
If you want to vote no, you press 2.
Right, sorry. When it has been counted...
Hold the mic in front of your mouth.
When it's been counted, it will show 1, that it's been received yes or that my vote was yes.
What will show on the screen here is either yes received or no received, one or the other.
And is that my vote or that it was received or not?
That is your vote unless you change it during the 15-second period.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the handsets? Okay. The handsets have new batteries and were all tested yesterday, so it's very unlikely that any will fail. But if you don't see the received response on the handset or you have any other problem with it, you can go to the electronic voting help desk, which is now empty, and nothing will happen.[806.48][806.48](LAUGHTER). I hope... We've moved it? Oh. Bayon. Okay. Now, if you go to the help desk, Bayon will help you. We're going to conduct one test vote to make sure everyone's handset is working. And question, the question is this, and this is one I asked at the annual town meeting, and I was sufficiently surprised by the result that I'm going to ask it again. Should we reinstate the election of the pound keeper and other traditional officers at the annual town meeting in April? Are we ready? Question. Wait, turn the... Hold on. We have a question. I'm sorry. The question is this: Should we reinstate the election of the pound keeper and other traditional officers at the annual town meeting in April? Everybody hear it? Ready to vote? Okay. The light is on. You have 15 seconds to vote.
You shouldn't tell me to turn it on. You have to tell me to turn it on. Don't you turn that to turn it on.
All right. We're going to try this again. If it's any consolation, mine wasn't turned on either.[895.13][895.13](LAUGHTER). Okay. So... See how well this is working? Okay. In the... In the lower right-hand corner of the handset, there is a power button. If the screen is blank, that means the power is turned off, and if you press the power button, it should turn on, and then you should see some print on the screen. So I'll give everybody a minute to turn on the handset.
Do you leave it on?
No, leave it on. Leave it on. I thought they were too. Okay. Does everybody see something printed on their screen? Okay. Let's try it again. Here's the question: Should we reinstate the election of the pound keeper and other traditional officers at the annual town meeting in April? Ready to vote? Okay. You should be seeing yes received or no received on your screen soon after you vote. And the answer is 155 yes, 111 no. And that's roughly the same result we got last April, so I can tell you, you will have the pleasure of electing the pound keeper next year. Any other questions on electronic voting? Everybody happy with it? Okay, then we'll go to Article 1. Article 1 is an amendment to the town's zoning bylaw, and Michael Sullivan, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Peter Canny, the Chair of the Planning Board, seconds. The Planning Board held the hearing required under the Zoning Enabling Act on September 11th and recommends approval. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Remarks, Mr. Sullivan, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The current Section 612 of the zoning bylaw essentially says that if you have a lot that is too small or has some other defect, is too thin or the like, but the most situations you're dealing with a lot that's too small. You have to have a certain size lot in order to build on your home. And so what the rule now basically says through interpretation by the State Supreme Court is that if you have a home that's sitting on a lot that is too small, in order to make a significant change to the home, you have to come before the zoning board for a special permit and a finding that that change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure that you have. So there has been an effort to change this rule over the years after the Supreme Court gave that interpretation. And last year, a similar effort to change the rule to basically eliminate the requirement that you get a special permit in that situation was voted down at town meeting. But a study committee was promised to the proponents of the change, and the study did take place. I was on the committee to study the elimination of the rule. A majority of the study committee favored elimination. I was not in that majority. The Planning Board was then inclined to accept the study committee's recommendation, and then it came to the ZBA for consideration of whether, the ZBA as a whole, to consider whether we should approve or not approve the proposed elimination of the rule that I described. And so I think our ultimate inclination, we ultimately approved it. Our inclination was that we're not the policymaking board in town. We had reservations about the change to the rule. We didn't also felt that if we had to give an opinion on it, we shouldn't be a rubber stamp either. So ultimately, what we decided to do was to support a modification of the rule to retain some zoning board jurisdiction over these matters in some neighborhoods say, in these applications, and in the most extreme cases. And that is the 50% formula that you see in the warrant and the proposed change to zoning bylaw 612. And the change would basically mean that if you have a lot that it retains at least 50% of the requirements that it has to have, so if it's at least half the size that it's supposed to be, and the footprint of your structure is not going to increase by more than 50%, then you don't have to have the special permit as you would have to do today. If you're going to increase either of those thresholds, then you would have to get a special permit as you do now, and that's the formula that you see. And I would suggest that it would reduce maybe six or eight applications that we see before our board every year and correspondingly, six or eight occasions during the year when the neighborhood would not be able to appear at hearings and comment on proposed changes that are above those thresholds, below those thresholds.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Now, as you probably noticed, if you were looking at your watches, Mr. Sullivan spoke for more than two minutes. And it's unfortunate to make an exception in the first article we take up after implementing that rule, but the fact is, this is a complex subject, and at the pre-town meeting, I told Mr. Sullivan that I could have more time if he needed it. So I hope no one else will. I'll recognize Sue Brown, the Town Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am actually just going to read a record, read a letter that was submitted by Frank Marangell. This is a letter on his behalf, although he serves on the planning board and was a member of the study committee for this bylaw. Dear Manchester citizens, I want to share with you some background data and thoughts surrounding the proposed zoning bylaw change of Section 6.1.2. We live in a town that has evolved over the past 370 years. The character that we love about Manchester has also created building lots of many different shapes and sizes. The town has happily existed with all this variability until 2008, when a Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court decision that we now just reference as Borkland determined that any change to a non-conforming property increases that nonconformity unless the town's zoning bylaw specifically states otherwise. Prior to the Borkland ruling in 2008, increasing the size of a structure alone on a lot that does not meet zoning standards, size, frontage, width, and others, while otherwise satisfying all other dimensional requirements such as setbacks and heights, was interpreted as not increasing the nonconforming nature of the structure and therefore could be built as a right. Since this change in 2008, many of our fellow citizens have been forced to apply for a special permit to make small changes to their homes. This process costs them thousands of dollars and months of delay, while very few of these applications get denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals. This unnecessary process also puts a burden on the ZBA workload. From our calculations, ours referring to the study group, I believe, from our calculation, nearly half of the homes in Manchester would be affected by this legal case. This change affects a large portion of our population, and yet we never voted for it. Most towns in Massachusetts are changing their bylaws to address this new interpretation, and Manchester is doing it here tonight. The proposed change has been researched by a subcommittee that included members of the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Town Planner, the Building Inspector, his assistant, and the assessor. The subcommittee overwhelmingly agreed that there is a need to amend Section 6.1.2 of the Manchester zoning bylaws. The Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals met several times to discuss this topic, and the bylaw change that is now on the ballot tonight is a result of this work. The residents of Manchester need to take back control of this bylaw and not let a court case from a different town limit our rights as property owners. This bylaw change has the support of both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you, Frank Marangell.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Brian Miller, 92 School Street. I understand there's already a mechanism to apply through the zoning board to get a special permit. I cannot see why we need to allow people to add onto their houses in nonconforming lots without going through a special process. The general, not the general district, but District D right now, you can make any house into a two-family, and in most cases, you can add an additional house onto that lot. So what we are allowing to happen is allowing a greater density in our town of these buildings, and I don't think we need that without going through a special procedure or permit to add onto a house in a nonconforming area.
Sir, sir, excuse me. Could you repeat your name? I didn't get it in the conference. Brian Miller? 92 School Street. Thank you. Further discussion? Yes? Paul? Yes. This is Paul Orlando, the Building Inspector.
Hello, everybody. I was on this committee that looked at this bylaw.
Paul, you should tip the mic up a little bit.
I was part of the committee that looked at this bylaw, and we spent several meetings. And what we did is we looked at different scenarios that may be approved by the Board of Appeals over the years, and we tried to find out what those scenarios were and if they were approved by the Board of Appeals, if they were changed. So this bylaw represents the kind of things that would likely be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals without any change or conditions added. What we're talking about is a nonconforming lot, but the building itself would have to meet all the setback requirements and the lot coverage requirements. And there are many areas in town that have been made, the lots are nonconforming due to zoning changes. You might have entire neighborhoods with lots of nonconforming. But to add like a second story to a ranch-style house that meets all the setbacks and the lot coverage requirements, we found that that might not be as significant and require a special permit, and those are the kinds of additions that we're talking about here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando. Further discussion? Yes, sir. The gentleman in the gray sweater, gray shirt.
David Behr, 12 Tappan Street. Under this proposed change, could someone apply in two successive years to increase the footprint 50%? 50% again?
I don't know the answer to that. It's possible that we could amend this to include that the building had to exist as of this date or the date of adoption of this bylaw.
I don't think that was the question. I think the question was, could a property owner come in in two successive years and apply for changes to the structure?
I think that the bylaw as it's written may allow that unless there's some kind of amendment or clarification to that.
Am I right, though, Mr. Orlando, that it would be permissible only if, as a result of both changes, the structure remain in conformity with all requirements of the zoning bylaw except for the lot size requirement?
That's correct.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Alexandra Garcia Mata, 70 Lincoln Street. Point of clarification, I don't understand. What someone was saying suggested that even if you meet the requirements of this new bylaw as written, you would still come before the zoning board, or you don't have to if you meet the qualifications. This is what is unclear to me.
Mr. Orlando, you might want to stay at the podium.[1763.71][1763.71](LAUGHTER).
What this bylaw is saying is that if your lot meets at least 50% of the lot area, frontage, and lot width requirements, and your building addition will meet all the setback and lot coverage requirements, then you would be allowed to put that addition on without going to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's correct.
The question was, so the applicant wouldn't have to come before the... The question was, so the applicant wouldn't have to come before the zoning board? Mr. Orlando, would the applicant need a building permit from you?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Palermo.
So it's Mary Palermo, 2 Parsons Lane. And it's my understanding that the purpose of the special permit is to notify the abudders when there's going to be construction in abutting lots that may affect their property and drainage or value of their property. So without having to apply for a special permit, the neighbor is unaware that construction is even going to happen.
Mr. Orlando?
Well, neighbors are not notified if the applicant meets all of the bylaw requirements. There's no notification to the neighbors. So only if an addition does not meet the requirements and requires relief from the zoning board are the neighbors notified.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando. I saw a hand up over here. Yes, sir.
Kurt Spatacca, 7 Bennett Street. I guess I'm looking at this. I have a non-conforming lot, but I'm somewhat against.
Could you hold the mic a little closer?
I have a non-conforming lot, but I would say I'm against this proposal in that it seems as though it's a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. It seems like I've seen the zoning board in action, and they're very, very good at what they do. And from my understanding, they approve 96% of the special permits that come before them. And I think it was just stated that they are only going to have to have six less per year. And the concept of having some professional group review a zoning issue is probably a good thing to have for all of us, for everybody's in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mrs. Cavett.
It's Carol Cavett, 1 Tuxpoint Road.
Would you hold the mic a little closer?
Is that better?
Yeah, if you tilt it, tilt it so it's facing your mouth.
Thank you. Okay, only 17 months ago, Town Meeting overwhelmingly voted down a very similar article sponsored by citizen Mr. Gary Gilbert, and it astonishes me that it is back and has the endorsement of the land boards and the selectmen because this version unapologetically proposes even looser protections from development than the one you turned down. I'm not going to try and confuse anybody about what the basics are, but generally, a lot that doesn't meet requirements for area setback or frontage is non-conforming, and it cannot be developed by right. So any new building on it requires a special permit. Zoning Board leads this process, as you know, engaging neighbors and collectively determines if the developer's proposal is appropriate or if it needs adjustment, and generally, this seems to work. And almost all special permit applications are successful, and an appeal is rare. But back to those looser protections, the 2016 article that Town Meeting overwhelmingly rejected proposed to waive certain permit review for lots that met 60% of area frontage and width requirements. Article 1 today asks you to waive the special permit review for lots that meet only 50% of the required area frontage and width. And why are we going backwards when Town Meeting seemed to indicate it didn't like what it heard before? In 2016, Town Meeting rejected a proposal to waive the special permit for a new house footprint 25% larger than an existing one. And today, you're being asked to waive a special permit where the new house footprint would be 50% larger with no review. So on a lot that meets only 50% of the basic zoning requirements, your neighbor could expand his house by 50% without input from neighbors or the board. We haven't been provided any official town-generated modeling to show how many lots could be developed under this article, but a snapshot search in three zones suggests that 2/3 of non-conforming lots could now expand their footprint without any town oversight. So if this article is intended to give relief to non-conforming lots, and there are many of them, it really becomes quite a big headache for everybody else in town. And I spoke against this in 2016, representing the planning board, and tonight, I'm speaking as a private citizen. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mrs. Cavett. Further discussion? Mr. Bowing.
So in 2016, I think one of the issues that Town Meeting had with the bylaw was there wasn't objective data about how many lots in town were actually affected by the current state of affairs and how many residents who wished to make modifications to their homes might have to go before the zoning boards. So although they voted down the article at the time, there was, as was previously stated, some sentiment for looking into a working group to look to see how many properties were actually affected. And that group, as Ms. Brown already stated, found that something like half of the lots in town would be affected by this, meaning something like half of the people wanting to make modifications to their properties would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is supposed to be a relatively exceptional event, not a standard common event for any modifications to your home. So I think it was felt by the working group that some modifications were needed in order to limit the expenses to your average homeowner who wanted to make modifications to their homes. So I think that's the difference between now and 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Bowing. I saw a hand over here. Yes, sir. Mr. Meldon.
The zoning board of appeals, I'm sorry, is this still on? ZBA issues special permits for modification of homes that are non-conforming. As we've talked about, examples of that are lots that are too small or houses that project into sidelines. The special permit process allows the abudders, that is, those withstanding, to communicate possible harm from a project. Objections are based on zoning law. They're not style or opinion-based opinions. They're public hearings, testimony, discussion, debate, and usually compromise. There's an appeal process for both the applicant and for the abudders. ZBA, as we've heard, grants 100% or close to that in special permits, and a very small percentage are appealed. Eliminating this special permit process would allow non-conforming property changes to happen without notification or input from the abudders, and that's all you. Non-conforming parcels, sometimes by their congested nature, are the very parcels that should receive review. My last section here is about zoning changes. As author of several of them over the years, they need very careful study to avoid unintended consequences. This proposal doesn't include serious or detailed predictions or modeling as to how many properties would be affected, where they exist, and the extent of the changes. The 50% increase in home size cited in the rule is utterly arbitrary and not based on a lot of analysis, sometimes called the build-out. This 50% rule would seem uniform in application, but would be wildly non-uniform in its impact, as you can tell just by doing the math on a lot or on a home size. Absent this data and analysis, the 50% threshold to waive a special permit also seems arbitrary. And it's ironic, the Superior Court overturns ZBA special permits that are deemed arbitrary. So the standard that the Superior Court uses to overturn special permits is how arbitrary something is. This change would affect everyone in this room possibly. I assume they'd all want input into a permanent change, and these are usually permanent changes next door. Increased congestion and home size would be a natural consequence of eliminating this oversight. And property developers, by the way, would love these changes as it would open the gates to exploit every single non-conforming property in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meldon. Ms. Irvin.
I'd like to move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Irvin has moved the question. That's the motion to cut off debate. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
All right. I'm going to do this by voice vote. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, it's a 2/3s vote, please raise your right hand. Thank you. If you're opposed, please raise your right hand. I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than 2/3s. So now we'll vote on Mr. Sullivan's motion, which is the article as printed in the warrant. This is a 2/3s vote under the Zoning Enabling Act. So if you're in favor of Mr. Sullivan's motion, please press 1 when the green light goes on. If you're opposed, please press 2. Light is on. Mine's not working either. All right. I'm going to give him a few minutes to figure that out. In the meantime, we'll vote the old-fashioned way. If you're in favor of Mr. Sullivan's motion, please raise your right hand with a red card in it. If you're opposed, well, no, sorry. If you're in favor, I'm going to ask the tellers to come forward. We're voting on Mr. Sullivan's motion, which is the article as printed in the warrant. If you're in favor of that, please raise your right hand with a red card in it, and please keep it up until you're sure you've been counted. 24. 17. Did someone count the head table? Okay, thank you. Any other tellers reporting? Okay. If you're opposed, please raise your right hand with a red card in it and keep it up until you're sure you've been counted. I think we can dispense with that count. I have no doubt the motion does not prevail by 2/3s. Okay. Article 2. Tom Keogh moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Eli Bowling seconds. The planning board held the hearing required by the Zoning Enabling Act on October 2nd and recommends approval, and the finance committee takes no position on this article. Now, I'm going to limit discussion under this article to the merits of the temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for recreational marijuana establishment. I'll not allow discussion of whether or how the town should permanently regulate marijuana establishments. As many of you know, under state law, towns that voted in favor of the ballot question in 2016 to legalize recreational marijuana must follow a two-step process to regulate such establishments. It requires a vote at Town Meeting and also a vote at the town election. However, Town Council has advised us that towns can enact the temporary moratorium simply through action at Town Meeting. So we wouldn't need, assuming that if this motion prevails tonight, it would not need to go on the ballot. It would be effective simply by our action tonight. So remarks, Mr. Keogh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Article 2 on the warrant this evening asks for the town to amend the zoning bylaws, adding a temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments until December 31st, 2018. This moratorium would regulate a zoning pause on any applications for recreational marijuana facilities. This article is supported by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and the Planning Board. As a town, we are in a time pinch for action. The timetable for the state-appointed Cannabis Control Commission to start accepting applications for recreational marijuana facilities, retail shops, growing facilities, and manufacturing facilities is April 1st, 2018. It is important to know that the Cannabis Control Commission will be governed only by the local zoning bylaws and ordinances in effect at the time of the application. If the town wishes to have any say in the placement of recreational marijuana facilities in town or the banning of recreational marijuana facilities in town, zoning regulations would need to be in place prior to April 1st, 2018. Our bylaws stipulate the day for our next annual Town Meeting to be Monday, April 2nd, 2018, and our town election to be May 15th, 2018. So as the moderator has already explained, we would have to take action at both of those events to have any zoning bylaws in effect. Both of those dates are after the April 1 time for the Cannabis Control Commission to accept applications. Just so you further understand the importance of acting on this moratorium, a lawyer representing a group that failed to get approval for a medical marijuana growing facility in the city of Gloucester has been in our town hall looking at plots of land in the assessor's books. What this planned moratorium does is it gives the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the Board of Health time to craft appropriate bylaws for the annual Town Meeting April 2018, without any worry of some individual or company coming into town, obtaining land, and making application to the state in that six weeks' window where we would have no bylaws in place to control or ban the recreational marijuana facilities. This moratorium would give the town until December 31st, 2018, to enact bylaws to control such facilities. I welcome any questions you have on the article.
Thank you, Mr. Keogh. And I'll recognize Dr. Deborah Bradley of the Board of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, members of the board and fellow residents. As a member of the Board of Health, I'd also like to express my support for this temporary marijuana moratorium. Following the November 4 vote, our state legislature took the 14-page bill that passed and expanded it to a 75-page document. This expanded law gives cities and towns the ability to establish bylaws in order to exercise local control. They also charged the Cannabis Control Commission with establishing comprehensive statewide guidelines regarding the licensing and operation of marijuana establishments. However, those guidelines will not be released until March 15th. And two weeks later, on April 1st, the state will start accepting license applications on our behalf for marijuana establishments. Currently, we have no town zoning bylaws pertaining to marijuana establishments, and if we don't have any at that time, we cannot create them and enforce them retrospectively. This moratorium will allow us and the town's legal counsel the time we need to review the guidelines, to meet with members of our community and solicit input, to create bylaws that are in our town's interest and make sure they're compliant with state laws, bring those bylaws to a Town Meeting, and if approved, place those bylaws as required on the ballot in the next Town Election. We can't do that by April 1st. You might ask what's happening around the state. 90 cities and towns have already imposed moratoriums. Hamilton, Gloucester, Danvers, Beverly, and Georgetown have imposed moratoriums. Essex has a Town Meeting coming up November 4th, and they're going to have a warrant article for a moratorium at that meeting as well. We all need to be aware that Massachusetts will soon become a hub for retail marijuana tourism in the Northeast. The only other state that's legalized marijuana- The only other state that's legalized marijuana so far is Maine, and we're much more of a central community. So as a community and a state, we have to get this right. We need time to do it. So on behalf of the Board of Health, the Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen, I ask for your support on Article 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? Are we ready to? Okay. We'll try it one more time. When the green light goes on, press 1 to vote yes, or 2 to vote no. Isn't technology wonderful? And the motion prevails by more than two-thirds, 275 to 29. Article 3. Peter Canny moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Andrea Fish of the Planning Board seconds the motion. The Planning Board held the hearing required by the Zoning Enabling Act just this evening before special town meeting convene and recommends approval. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. And I'll recognize Sue Brown for very brief remarks. Susan Beckman, I'm sorry. No, the motion is printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. This is basically a housekeeping issue for the zoning board and the Board of Selectmen. We're asking you to approve reducing the number of years for service from five to three, hoping that will incite some more folks that might want to come on board and help us on the zoning board. In addition to that, allow us to have some extra time in terms of having terms end on a yearly basis so that we can fulfill and enable to fill the board's positions more effectively. So, we're asking for her approval tonight on that. Thank you.
My apologies, Ms. Beckman and everyone. I turned the wrong page. So I had the wrong cast of characters for that one, but the outcome is right. Okay. So this is, this is to change the zoning bylaw with respect to the appointment of the Board of Appeals. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Jodas. Would you wait for the, uh, mic, please?
Jerry Jodas, 15 Woodcrest. I'd like to note that the magic machine is still indicating the prior vote.
It, it should be saying received, but it shouldn't be saying yes or no. It says yes or no? It just cleared. Thank you, Mr. Jodas. Okay. Are we going to smooth this out? Josh? Okay. All right. So, Article 3 is to amend the zoning bylaw, as Ms. Beckman stated. Is there discussion? This is also a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of that, when the green light, green light goes on, please press 1 to vote yes, and 2 to vote no. And the motion prevails by more than two-thirds, 307 to 8. Okay. Article 4 is an amendment to the zoning bylaw to adopt new floodplain maps. Peter Canny moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Andrea Fish seconds the motion. This is where I was before. The Planning Board held the hearing required by the Zoning Enabling Act this evening before we convened, and it recommends approval. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position. And now I'll recognize Sue Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This also is a housekeeping item. This simply asks to change a map referenced in this zoning article. It's the flood insurance rate maps. They recently had a change following a study by the town. So this is just asking for that reference to that updated map.
Thank you. This is also a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor, please raise your right hand with a red card in it. Thank you. And if you're opposed, please raise your right hand with a red card in it. I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. Article 5 is a proposal to transfer three parcels of land to the Conservation Commission, and Steve Gang, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Eli Bowling of this Board of Selectmen seconds the motion. Remarks, Mr. Gang?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. It's a pleasure to forward this. This is not a housekeeping item. This is a simple and powerful first step toward protecting our remarkably good drinking water, our open woodlands, and some of our streams. We're proposing unanimously, Concom is proposing that three small parcels in West Manchester, which are entirely landlocked, they're along a woodland trail that extends off the end of Crooked Lane, that these three be placed under a permanent conservation restriction, which means that no one will be able to build on them. Two of them are in the watershed for gravelly and round ponds, and the third is in the watershed for Bennett Brook. And each of them has features those of you who walk out there would recognize immediately as intermittent streams or nearby wetlands. I've been puzzling over why this seems such an obvious move to me, and maybe not to all of you, and I realize that, growing up, my father was very active in conservation. Missed a lot of dinners and spent a lot of time as a volunteer in the New York area, working on projects like preserving the Meadowlands, which were, and I realize now how much his influence affected what I believe and where I spend my time, but even more so, more than he could have anticipated, how it's affected his grandsons. So, if you understand this proposal, if you're moved by it, and if you vote for it, you can take several gifts home to your children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gang. And I recognize Maury Creighton for the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. The Finance Committee reviewed this article at two of our meetings and said, can you hear me? And we're recommending against approval at this time, and there were a couple of key factors that sort of moved into our recommendation on this. One of them is that the information on these parcels, their abutters, and their potential for the town was unclear at the time of our meetings on this topic. We also feel that the town, more town research is needed on these particular parcels. In our opinion, the process in bringing these properties forward for consideration was incomplete. It was not fully vetted or pursued by the Planning Board or other town committees. For example, these parcels were not evaluated for possible affordable housing opportunities or other potential town uses. These three properties total almost six acres and may have financial value for the town now or in the future, and more definitive information is needed, we feel. Transfers of land and property to conservation land or restricted use, once in place, are very, very difficult for the town or others to reverse, so we need to proceed cautiously here. Manchester is limited by the available land for town uses. We do believe in supporting open space, but feel that the town should be careful and evaluate and define a plan for all of its limited properties that it owns for future and long-term needs before they are transferred or altered for use. And finally, the town is undergoing a comprehensive master planning process at this time, and I think the results of this will be available soon, and we feel that it would be prudent to wait until this plan is in place for a long-term view before placing semi-permanent or permanent land transfers in place here. Again, the Finance Committee is recommending against approval of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creighton. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Robert Reed, 12 Forester Road. Back in 1996, I was on the Conservation Commission, and during that year, I stood as the Chair. We voted identically at that time to attack the purchase of Hamilton Woods, which we ended up getting the Selectmen behind us, the town behind us, and we purchased all that land for our water rights in perpetuity forever. I stand in support of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article actually originally came before the Board of Selectmen shortly before last annual town meeting, and at the time, it was felt that properties proposed had not been sufficiently vetted with respect to our ongoing master planning, and the Board did not advance this article to the annual town meeting at that time. That's actually one of the ones that we pushed out to this town meeting. We asked the town planner to conduct a more thorough review of the proposed properties within the context of the master plan and the activities of the Master Planning Committee, and that review was conducted and resulted in this revised list that's before you tonight. So the Board of Selectmen is comfortable that the vetting process was sufficient at this point and supports Article 5.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Yes. Wait for the left mic, please.
Sally Curry, Hidden Lodge Road. I just have a question about what it means by saying that the parcels were acquired by the town by tax possession. Does that mean the taxes weren't paid? What does it mean?
Yes, it means the taxes weren't paid and the town foreclosed on the unpaid obligation. Further discussion? Uh, yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike Chapman, 131 Bridge Street, and I'm the Chairman of the Open Space and Recreation Committee, and speaking in support of Article Number 5. So Goal Number 2 of our committee is to protect land significant to drinking water protection, wildlife habitat, and natural resource protection, and members of the committee work to identify these unprotected parcels, and also work to prepare the article in order to protect these parcels. And I just, suffice it to say that the protection of our sources of drinking water is a critical issue that impacts all of the citizens, citizens of Manchester. The Open Space and Recreation Committee enthusiastically supports this article, and we ask you to support it tonight with your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. I saw a hand in the back over here? Okay. All right. Further discussion? Mrs. Bethel.
Thank you, Helen Bethel. I, 59th School Street. I have been involved in environmental activities in this town for a long time. We, the concert, I was on the Conservation Commission for 13 years, back in the 80s, mainly. At that time, we put a lot of effort into open space planning. We did investigate all the critical elements of natural resource protection in this town. At the time, they didn't even know where the watersheds for the town well on Lincoln Street and the ponds in, in Hamilton, they hadn't been defined. We did, and we helped get that ball rolling to protect them. So since 1988, the Conservation Commission, through its open space planning, supported by the town, has been trying to protect our water supplies. And this is just a minor step for the Lincoln, not for the Lincoln Street well, but for the round pond, gravelly pond area. It's long overdue. We, yes, we did protect the Gordon Woods in Hamilton, but as far as Manchester's concerned, there are 57 acres in that watershed in Manchester, and only several acres are currently protected. And this would add just another four acres to that total. In an area close by 128, if you picked up the handout, you could see where they are. They're so far from being available or appropriate for affordable housing, and what is more important to the town? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bethel. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith. Wait for the mic, please.
George Smith, 8 Mascanoma Street. There are thousands of chemicals in the environment. Some are good, some are bad. Most of them, we don't know which they are. The, we, but it's impossible from an engineering standpoint to treat all those chemicals, or even the bad ones that we know. It's just, engineering, impossible. Vegetation, these are in the watershed for our drinking water supply. Vegetation can screen them out, they can absorb them, they can break them down, or slow them down so they break down naturally. We must save as much of our watershed as possible in view of the coming water shortages that we are looking, were coming in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Irvin.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'm not, I'm not doing anything right now. I just want to point out-
Could you give us your name and address, Ms. Irvin?
Sorry, Adele Irvin.
I think most of us know, but-
Unfortunately, I'm afraid you do. Adele Irvin, 113 Ocean Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that these are woodlots, if I'm reading the things correctly, and while I rarely ever go against the Finance Committee, I think affordable housing in woodlots is not going to be in the future, and that our water supply is perhaps more important. I would hope we would vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. I think I saw a hand, sorry. In, behind Ms. Irvin? Yes.
Just to Lorena Iavani-
Could you give it?
Lorena Iavani, 28 Pine Street, and just to support this conservation proposal, I just want to underscore, I, I used to work with the Ipswich River watershed, and there is nothing more important for a community, other than to protect its resources, and particularly water. And so I also agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier. Why is this even on a warrant? It is the duty and responsibility of this town to protect our drinking water. So this is a no-brainer. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I had my say as well on this. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I can tell you, the reason it's on the warrant is because this is how we're required by state law to affect the purpose. We have to do it this way. We have no choice. Any further discussion over here? Yes?
Isabel Bates, 2 Mascanoma. I move the question.
Thank you. Is that seconded? If you're in favor of that, please say aye. Opposed, no. I have no doubt it prevails by more than two-thirds. Okay, now, this is also a two-thirds vote. This is not zoning, but under state law, Chapter 40, Section 15, to transfer care, custody, and control from one town board to another takes a two-thirds vote. So, if you're in favor of that, when the light goes on, please press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. The motion prevails by more than two-thirds, 284 to 25. Article 6 is an amendment to the general bylaw with respect to the Affordable Housing Trust, and Margaret Driscoll moves the article as printed in the warrant, except that the word "creation" in Sections 1 and- word "creation" in Sections 1 and 3, and the words "governmental auditing standards" in Section 12B should not be shown in bold type because they're included in the existing bylaw. They're not being added tonight. So, other than that, it's as printed in the warrant. John Foyerbach, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, seconds. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval, and the Finance Committee is taking no position. Remarks, Mrs. Driscoll.
Thank you. So, this is another housekeeping issue. The Manchester Affordable Housing Trust was established by town meeting vote in 2016 with a mission to increase diversity of housing options to meet the needs of Manchester's low and moderate-income households. Article Six requests the approval of the proposed amendments to the trust bylaws by adding the words "acquisition, rehabilitation, and support." There is also language added to clarify that town staff may assist the trust if the trust so chooses. These are recommendations by Town Council to conform our bylaw with recent changes in state law.
Thank you, Mrs. Driscoll. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I so declare it. Article Seven is a petition article and relates to creating no parking zones on certain streets, and I'll recognize Bill Cross for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a new Section 30A to Article 10, Police and Other Regulations, as follows. Section 30A, no parking zones. A, parking on the following streets or portions of streets is prohibited, except (1) within 300 feet of religious institutions-
Now, the motion, his motion is not the same as what's printed in the article. It contains some changes. One of them is the 300 feet, and there are other changes, as you will see. So, bear with us.
Except (1) within 300 feet of religious institutions during organized services or special events, and (2) when temporarily authorized by the Manchester-by-the-Sea Police Department. Beach Street, east of Tappan Street, Maskanoma Street, inclusive of Numbers 1 to 56 through the end of the public way, Old Neck Road, Proctor Street, inclusive of Numbers 1 to 32 through the end of the public way, C Street, and Tappan Street. B, violations of this bylaw shall be punished by fines established by the Board of Selectmen. Each day of violation shall constitute a separate offense. C, the Manchester-by-the-Sea Police Department shall enforce this bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. And I understand that Gail Bacon seconds the motion. Remarks, Mr. Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, fellow citizens. On behalf of the many people who have helped develop this motion, we appreciate your consideration. Over the last year, we've grown increasingly concerned about the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists in the vicinity of Singing Beach. This motion is intended to enhance the safety of the streets near the beach by affirming the present parking regulation for five of those six streets through the additional authority of town meeting, and by returning the regulation of the block of Beach Street between Tappan and Old Neck Road to its condition prior to 2016. That is, no parking on either side of the street. The motion is not a holistic plan for on- or off-street parking in the entire town, nor does it intend to be. It is simply an effort by citizens to enhance parking safety comprehensively in the area of the town's best-known destination. We agree with the Selectmen that Manchester needs more parking, especially for the benefit of merchants in the town center, but we do not believe that the incremental two-hour spaces created last year on this block of Beach Street helped the merchants. To the contrary, we have observed that visitors to Manchester use these spaces specifically to go to the beach, away from the shops they might frequent otherwise. We have also observed numerous incidents of hazardous U-turns, bicyclists narrowly averting open car doors, drivers double parking as they await a coveted space, and pedestrians losing in a battle with cars. We are pleased that these incidents have yet to lead to injury or loss of life, and wish to act preventively ahead of such tragedy. The creation of high-turnover parking spaces near the beach does not alleviate the town's problems, but rather creates a new problem by endangering town residents and visitors alike. Please support the safety of our streets by voting in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. The Finance Committee is taking no position on this article. I'll recognize Eli Bowling for the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen do not support Article Seven. Article Seven creates a new area of the type of town bylaw pertaining to parking, specifically constraining a select set of streets in town. The primary reason put forth by the petitioners concerns safety on Beach Street. However, the Police Department has repeatedly indicated that the additional parking on Beach Street does not represent a safety issue, and they've analyzed it. Even if there are perceived safety issues, there are other ways of dealing with them. The Board of Selectmen recently adopted a general speed limit in town at 25 miles per hour, and established a safety zone at 20 miles per hour that will cover much of Beach Street, and this will improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists across the board throughout the town. Board of Selectmen added parking to Beach Street at the recommendation of the ad hoc parking committee in order to relieve parking congestion in downtown in summer hours, and to provide more parking access to people going to events in Maskanoma Park, including concerts, soccer games, and Little League games. Since then, feedback from business owners has been that the move has had a positive effect on downtown parking. Passages of this article could set a precedent for other neighbors to ask town meeting to ban parking in areas around other fields where the town has a larger interest that competes with the wishes of a small set of residents. The town has recently begun to reexamine the parking and traffic more broadly in town, engaging engineers to study options for making changes to traffic flow patterns. Some of these have already been floated to various public forums. More will be considered in the future. In some of the concepts offered, at least one of the streets referenced in this article would be a subject of the change that might well allow for resident-only parking on one side. The current town bylaws give the authority to the Board of Selectmen through public hearings to determine where parking and no parking zones are set. Calling out specific streets in the bylaw makes planning and infrastructure work much more cumbersome for town planners and the administration to manage, and can lead to delays or alterations of capital projects which intersect with such additional constraints. The Board of Selectmen asks you to vote no on Article Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. I'll recognize Andy Harris, the Chair of the Downtown Improvement Committee.
Andrew Harris, 26 Tappan Street, Chairman of the Downtown Improvements Project Committee, and also participant in the Complete Streets Program, which the town is undertaking, and Eli has referred to. Much of the Complete Streets Program involves trying to slow down traffic, not only through the numbers, the speed you're allowed to go, which is 20 miles an hour, will be 20 miles an hour, from, throughout the town, within half a mile of the train station. That is all of Beach Street. One of the traffic calming measures included in Complete Streets is to narrow the travel lanes. Another is to have parking, such as we do have, without going up the hill on Beach Street. The measure that is presented starts a process, but does not recognize the traffic calming needs, particularly where they'd wish to take out parking. So, it's really contrary to Complete Streets, and it is a process that should be done that way, not through a spot here, a spot there, which does give the impression of not being, does give the impression of not in my backyard.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reed.
Good evening. Bob Reed, 12 Forrester Road. I rise in opposition to this warrant article. While I agree completely with the fact that the parking should be returned to what it was previously, the town enjoys a beautiful scenic view of the coves there, and now, when you drive by predominantly, you're watching for cars and people coming between them. I think it actually increases the hazard. The second reason that I oppose this is that most of the streets seem to be confined to a certain area. It would be the same as saying, why don't we make no parking from Pine Street to Beverly Farms? Nobody would like that. That's a dumb idea. The third reason is there are two public landings, one at Lobstecove on Maskanoma, and the other at Proctecove on Proctor Street, that the original town founders landed on when they first investigated this town. They're both public property. Twenty years ago, we tried to create parking at the Lobstecove scene and ran into some problems with local residents in the area. I would like to see something done for public access to town public lands, as opposed to ruling off all this parking and charging four times as much for a parking ticket as you charge for anyplace else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Starkey.
Jim Snarky, 13 Velvetie Smooth, Tux Point Road. Mr. Moderator, I'm going to start by confessing that I do not have an informed opinion on this subject. Now, why am I standing up? I do recognize that parking policy and regulations are complex. They involve understanding and balancing various conflicting interests, understanding the traffic engineering, state regulations and laws, safety issues, probably even town liability. Now, I'm reasonably sure of four things. One, I do not understand these issues. Two, I suspect that a fair number of people here don't know that much more about it than I do. Third, I have no desire to sit here in town meeting and become thoroughly educated in these issues. And fourth, I don't think these decisions should be made by people who are not well-informed on these issues. We have a Board of Selectmen. We pay them big bucks to study these issues, and we may not always agree with their decisions. They don't always get things right first time around, but sooner or later, they seem to figure out what the right thing to do for the best interest of the town. So, it's my recommendation that we vote this thing down tonight thoroughly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Starkey. Further discussion? Yes, you had your hand up for a while. Ms. Dixon.
Hi, Wendy Dixon, Summer Street. I like making decisions based on facts, and I'm wondering if we could hear from the Chief of the Police Department about the increase in accidents that has happened since the new parking spaces have gone in, such that we need to take measures to remove the parking spaces on C Street.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. I'll recognize Police Chief Ed Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I issued a report on October 13th. It's widely available on our website, my social media, my Twitter feed, if anybody wants to follow me. We had, 2016, we had two accidents on the length of Beach Street. It's impossible for us with our software to kind of narrow down where the accidents occur, so I took a look at every accident. Two in 2016, and 11 we had in 2017 year-to-date. Each accident, we looked at it, we reviewed it. Not one of them was connected to the parking on Beach Street. That answers your question.
Excuse me. Would you wait to be recognized, please? Would you sit down, please? I'm going to recognize the lady in the back with her hand up.
Stephanie Nahadis-Senical, Bridge Street and Beach Street. I've lived here all my life, as my family has, and we've seen many, many changes. As far as the parking on Beach Street, it does not increase business, because that's what businesses says. They're there to go to the beach, which we can understand. But the problem is, it's too congested. If you come down Beach Street past Captain Dusty's, there's a big stance, so that, for the crosswalk. If there's an ambulance or a fire truck going by, they have to go around it, and you've got all those cars. They change the line, so now it's narrower. It's a hazard. It's a hazard. It's an accident waiting to happen. We cannot have this kind of traffic on Beach Street. We get it anyways, but to have all that parking also deters the beautiful view of our harbor. So, I am in favor of eliminating that parking, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Rossi.
Which sister are you going to go for?
I'm in the middle, so I get two of them. Alfred Rossi, 89th Bridge Street, also a member of the Downtown Improvement Committee. One of the, as Andy pointed out, one of the main ways of slowing down traffic is narrowing lanes. Now, if that makes it difficult, then you're going too fast, because we're going to change the lanes on Pine Street to 10-foot. And the lanes now on Beach Street with the parking is our 10 feet, each direction. As far as the scenic goes, I drive that street, and if you're going towards the beach, you shouldn't be looking, because you're going to cause an accident. If you're going from the beach to town, about three to four cars obstruct view. After that, there's shrubs behind them. So, I don't think that's an issue. But, there's no question that those parking spaces are used for more than beach, because Little League plays on that playground. They have concerts on the playground, so it actually serves the town.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Yes, the lady in the pink shirt.
Hi, my name is Nicole Darozaria. I'm from Forest Street. I'm also the owner of Safari. On behalf of merchants, those parking spaces, they are used for customers. They're used for those people that come from the beach and actually want to walk through town and spend a few bucks in a restaurant or a store. They're used for those people that might want to come rent a paddleboard. They're used for lots of people. The other thing they did for us, they made all those people that think, ah, that $40 or whatever it is ticket in town, I don't care, they line up in front of my store every Sunday. They weren't there that much this year. They moved. They went and got the ticket over closer to the beach. It did slow down the traffic. And why should anyone get a $100 ticket on that side of town and get a cheaper one in front of my store when I'm actually trying to conduct business? It opened them up. So, let's be friendly. Let's not fight and make all of these people say, I don't want to go to Manchester because I can't park my car.
Thank you. The lady in the black sweater.
Kathy Burrows, 60 Pine Street. I would really like to know what the, what the Police Chief can tell us about what revenues were for parking tickets. I frankly agree with Mrs. Senical about driving on Beach Street. I don't even go downtown on the weekends anymore because it's ridiculous. But I have, on occasion, gone downtown and seen the same truck with the same- But I have on occasion gone downtown and seen the same truck with the same logo on it parked in a parking space from 1:00 in the afternoon until 4:00 in the afternoon in a clearly marked two-hour parking zone. So if we're going to let people park there, it ought to be some benefit to us and people ought to be ticketed if they've been in the spaces for more than two hours.
Chief Conley.
I can respond to that. Just some caveat, like I said earlier, our records management system doesn't allow me to sort of just zoom in on those parking spots. The figures I would give you refer to all of Beach Street. That's the only way I can run it. So this year, we collected somewhere in the vicinity of $57,920 total in parking revenue from tickets. I don't want to call that revenue or just say that that's the level of fining that we did this year. Of that, $29,840 was from Beach Street or coded as Beach Street parking. So a significant percentage of the total revenue, that was -- I said it again, I strike that. The total number of fines that were issued were from that amount.
Thank you, Chief.
The reason this proposal was --
Could you give us your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. This is -- I'm Don Besser, 13 Smith Point Road. The reason this proposal was put forth is because there's bedlam and chaos on Beach Street because of the parking there. As described, people are parking double spaces, waiting for spaces to open up. The Board of Selectmen had two meetings on this issue and it was -- and residents were overwhelmingly against parking on Beach Street. The Board of Selectmen is against this, I believe, because they're trying to maintain their authority when they failed to recognize that there is chaos in Bedlam and we need to have safety and sensibility restored to the neighborhood and to that street. It's true, we need parking spaces for the concerts. I'm sure we can have some kind of arrangement where the current signs say it's to 6:00 p.m. We will be able to have parking for concerts. But we have to recognize this is a bad situation. Common sense says it should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Besser. The lady in the black sweater.
I truly don't think this --
Could you give us your name and address?
Isabella Bates, 2 Mascanomo. I truly don't think that this discussion this evening can go on without the absolute ridiculousness of the white, I mean, the yellow lines and the black that was put over them that then came off and it makes navigating on the streets of Manchester hazardous by definition because there's no way you understand which lines are the legal lines. And quite honestly, when the new lines came in and I was having to drive my car a little farther over to the right down Beach Street, I could get used to doing that, but then there is this two sets of lines and I don't know what's going on and nobody else does either. So when you talk about hazard, that just plain markings on the street have been a mess.
Well, I think we can all sympathize with that comment. It's not germane to this article, so I hope we won't -- I hope we won't have more comments on the lines. Yes, the lady in the turquoise. No, no, behind you. Yes. You, that's right. You had your hand up.
Teresa Conway, 7 Proctor Street. So the street that I live on is covered by this article as well. There's already no parking signs posted in front of my house, so it's unclear to me how this would change. The majority of this would change the parking on this street and the other streets outside of Beach Street. The majority of this discussion is based on the Beach Street parking and therefore, if I'd like to amend this motion to strike the streets other than Beach Street from
Well, I think that amendment is within the scope of the warrant. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
It's seconded. So your amendment would limit the effect of this to Beach Street alone, is that correct? Okay. I just want to be sure I understand that. And your name again, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Teresa Conway.
Okay. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ron Skates and I live on Boardman Avenue. I'm not an immediate resident in the area which we're discussing. My concern is, and it meant two of the hearings that I had before the selectmen, is we're talking about a lot of theoretical studies. But it seems to me if we've got a lot of parking revenue coming from the police chief, which I think is doing a great job, that means a lot of people are staying there a lot longer than shopping in the stores. They're basically going there all day to go to the beach and I suspect that's a good piece of the $29,000 you just referred to. Second of all, though, my real concern isn't that. My concern is really safety. I think that we have created a terrible situation. I've seen personally, anecdotal evidence is not very good. On two occasions, I've seen little kids almost get hit because people open their doors, they don't look, you see U-turns. It's almost if we keep this, then we ought to sign up policemen there full-time to direct the traffic. Someone's going to be killed.
Thank you, Mr. Skates. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Gentlemen in --
Harris Kamishane, 5 Eaglehead Road. So with all due respect to the police, and I'm a big supporter of the police, the reason that they're not against this is because they don't have a presence down there. Everywhere I go, I live on the Eaglehead Road, everywhere I go to leave town, I have to drive down Beach Street. On my phone in my pocket, I have 20 pictures of cars doing illegal U-turns. This is from one 15-minute period on a Saturday and I experience that every single weekend in the summer. If you want to raise money, you should put a police car down there full-time. You would probably be able to give out 100 traffic violations a day at a minimum for illegal U-turns. And these aren't just regular U-turns. These are people spying spots and as soon as they see them, they quickly speed and flip around their car. I've seen people go over the curb. This is a serious traffic hazard. And if we're going to accept danger on Beach Street to our residents and to others in order to slow down traffic, that's really a ridiculous way to slow down traffic. So I support this. I support this article.
Yes, the lady in the brown sweater, you've had your hand up for quite a while.
Hi, Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I walk these streets a lot, separating out Beach Street. On the rest of the streets that are listed here, I would hate to see signs going up everywhere telling people that they can't park. So I like the idea of helping look at the traffic patterns and seeing what works with the experts, but for everyone coming from out of town, they're going to have to know what the rules are, which means on Mascanomo Street, on Eaglehead, on all of these other beautiful roads, we're going to have to be putting up all these signs and honestly, we have a lot of signs in town already.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir, in the back there. On your right, my left.
Henry Lappam, 25 C Street. I just want to say that I use Beach Street very often, being retired and going in and out of town, and have to contend with what's going on on Beach Street. And I might say that coming up from town to the beach, you have people parking, you have mom and dad getting out of cars, you have children getting out, you have mom and dad getting things out of their trunk or out of their car, not watching their kids. Sometimes the kids run around the car onto the street and are quickly told to get back. People open doors. It's a mess. It's a disgrace. And I tell you, it's just an accident waiting to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Lappam. Yes, sir. In the last row? No? Yes.
John Carlson, 9 Walker Road, former member of the Bike and Dassian Committee for seven years. As far as safety goes, I would say anybody that's so concerned about safety, a cyclist has every chance of getting doored cycling anywhere through Manchester Center and not just along Beach Street. It can happen anywhere and the fact is that you have cars parked there doesn't increase their chances because my son or I or any one of our fellow cyclists can get doored anywhere in Manchester by the same thing by drivers that don't pay attention. As far as safety is concerned, I would say if people were so concerned about safety, where were they two, three, four years ago to try to change the speed limit laws where it's now posted 30 miles an hour in front of Captain Dusty's? If you were really that concerned about safety, where were you to speak up and say, we need to lower the speed limit? No, it's only when it's affecting your view. And as far as people looking at the view, I would say, why don't you get out of your car and walk on the sidewalk? You'll get a far prettier view for a lot longer time than you will doing a quick glance over to your right or to your left and thus endangering the safety of anybody doing in a crosswalk or cycling on that road. Thank you.
I'd like to move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. Is that seconded? If you're in favor, that's the motion to cut off debate. It's a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor, please raise your right hand with the red card in it. Thank you. If you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. And I know Ms. Irvin had in mind to cut off debate both on Ms. Conway's amendment as well as on the main motion. So we will vote now on Ms. Conway's amendment, which is to strike from the motion all of the streets listed except for Beach Street east of Tappan. If you're in favor of that amendment eliminating all the other streets, please press 1 when the light goes on. And Ms. Conway's amendment prevails by a vote of 223 to 87. Okay, so we'll now vote on the main motion as we've just amended it and that would be to prohibit parking on Beach Street east of Tappan. If you're in favor of that, please press 1 when the green light goes on. And the amended motion prevails by a vote of 174 to 141. And Article 8 relates to kennels. It's an amendment to the general bylaw and I'll recognize Gail Bacon for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to all. I move to amend Article 10, Section 28(c)(2) of the general bylaws to add after the second sentence, the following. A kennel license shall be issued only to establishments in the limited commercial districts.
I think you left out the word located.
I left out what?
The word located. Located in limited --
Located in the limited commercial district.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. And Bill Cross seconds the motion. The Board of Selectmen recommends a negative vote and the Finance Committee is taking no position on this article. As I'm sure you realize from reading the warrant article and hearing Ms. Bacon's motion, the two are significantly different, which raises a question of whether her motion is within the scope of the warrant. And that's a -- the scope of the warrant issue revolves around whether or not the warrant article was sufficient to give reasonable notice to the voters of the action to be taken. The effect of the warrant article, if we had approved that, would have been to eliminate kennels, to prohibit kennels throughout the town. The effect of the motion, as she's just read it, will be to eliminate kennels in the town except in the limited commercial district. That is a more narrow action than the original article proposed and so my conclusion is that it's within the scope of the warrant. Remarks, Mrs. Bacon.
I agree. I just want to start by saying that I am a dog lover and I am a dog owner, but we would like to eliminate the option of a kennel license in residential, and I emphasize residential neighborhoods, in the town of Manchester. According to the town clerk, a Manchester resident can purchase a kennel license for a small fee, but there is no written limit on the number of dogs per household. That means there's an unlimited number that one can own. Our neighbor is a dog breeder and has had as many as 20 dogs at one time. This has been a real disturbance to our neighborhood with barking dogs on and off all day long. We would like to change this bylaw to make sure that you don't experience the same disruption in your residential neighborhood that we experienced in ours. Please vote yes on Article 8. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bacon. I'll recognize Eli Bowling for comments on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
So the Board of Selectmen does not recommend approval of this article. We've been back and forth on this a few times and we spent some time over the last few hours in the weekend trying to review the latest language. While it seems like it makes things better, we don't really believe that it does. Part of the problem is the definitions, the legal definitions of the words that are in the state bylaw and the town bylaws and the unintended consequences that can come from too narrowly looking at these definitions. So right now, our bylaw actually says that an owner or keeper of more than four dogs must get a kennel license. Keeper has a very broad definition and we were talking to town council about this just before this meeting and it could be construed to include, for example, dog walkers because it simply says that anybody who is a person or a corporation in possession of the dog, doesn't say that they own the dog or they have the dog at their property, just says possession. There are legal arguments to be made that a dog walker should be affected by this. So our bylaw says these people have to get a kennel license and the amendment to the law says that the kennel license will only be approved within the limited commercial district. So that means that this is going to affect more than just people who have kennels. It means anybody who is a keeper of a dog. So there will probably be unintended consequences from this. And I'll tell you that shortly before this meeting, I asked the town clerk how many kennel licenses we have and currently, I think there are two or three. And only one of them is for a kennel, the other for people who own more than four dogs. So these are residents who have more than four dogs, just own more than four dogs, who won't be able to keep those four dogs anymore and have to get rid of one because they can't move to the limited commercial district, can't have a residence in the limited commercial district and the Lord knows, are they going to move to the limited commercial district? district to have five dogs? No. So there's unintended consequences from this bylaw, as well as intentioned as it may be. And if it's to proceed, then we think that there should be a sit-down between the Animal Control Board and proponents of this sort of thing to try to work out something that won't have unintended consequences for people in town. So please vote against this.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. And I recognize Carrie Bisner, the Chair of the Animal Control Board.
Hi, I'm Carrie Bisner. I live on Big Rock Road, and I'm the Chair of -- I'm sorry, I'm the Chair of the Animal Control Board. I'm Carrie Bisner. I live on 5 Big Rock Road. I'm going to read, so I'll make my time limit.
Ms. Bisner, if you hold the mic right directly in front of your mouth, pointing to the end of it.
Okay, great. The Animal Control Board has unanimously voted to recommend a no vote on this article. We have serious public safety concerns with eliminating kennel licenses. The requirement is specifically in place so the town knows where the dogs are and what their vaccination status is. They know that they've passed annual inspections and more, and they know that they meet all the health and safety and animal welfare standards. That's specifically why you want them to be in the system. You don't want people not to have a kennel license. This also requires a very well-trained animal control officer to be involved, which is preferable to the police just trying to randomly find out if someone has four dogs. So by eliminating, I'm sorry, by eliminating the licenses, you're encouraging people who do have multiple pets to not register their dogs. They're not going to get rid of their pets. They might have gotten their pets, you know, because of a death in the family or remarriage, but you're encouraging people to go outside the system, which is exactly what we don't want to have happen. Now, to meet the health and safety standards, you can't have an unlimited number of dogs. It's very self-limiting, you know? If for some reason you wanted to have a lot of dogs and you have absolutely perfect conditions, you'll meet the inspection standards, but otherwise you won't. There's already a very robust process in place for animal control, and we should be utilizing that. Our bylaws directly reflect the Massachusetts state laws, and that has all the accompanying legal precedents. Everything has already been established. Secondly, I'd say it's not really fair to arbitrarily limit the number of pets someone may own. It, you know, it impacts other things, as Mr. Bowling said, like rescues, fosters, even veterinarians, grooming. All the other things fall under the definition of needing a kennel license. It's not just someone who's professionally breeding a dog. So I think therefore, we were very concerned there was no brand-thoughtering for existing dogs. We, I don't see how we would actually enforce that. We can't really have people forcing them to either get rid of a dog or break a bylaw. That's not a good position for the town to be in. I think curtailing the current and future rights of the entire town is not something that we should take lightly. Bylaw changes should not be utilized for individual neighborhood problems. They should be a more global framework, which we do already have. We'd like to encourage the transparency in licensing, which better services the public, and therefore, after much thought and research, we're recommending a negative vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bisner. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
Curtis Rising, 16 Front Street. And this is a serious question. This talks about species, so does that mean we're focused on dogs, but this is applied to any animal species? I'm not clear. So there are a lot of species that don't bark, like rabbits and guinea pigs and hamsters.
Well, there are two sentences in the existing bylaw. The first sentence applies to any species. The second sentence that talks about kennels applies only to dogs. Further discussion?
Gretchen Wood, 19 Brook Street. Can you tell me, I should know this, what the limited commercial district covers? And just a personal note, that I live across the street from a dog breeder who usually has six to eight dogs, and I will tell you, it's a very noisy proposition. You can't keep your windows open in the summer if you want to listen to a TV or have a little peace because that many dogs in a close neighborhood is very difficult. So I think unless you want to have that in your own neighborhood, you might consider
Thank you, Mrs. Wood. I'll ask Administrator Fettersfield to describe the limited commercial district. I can do it, but I hope he can do it more precisely.
Well, I was going to just paint a broad.
You need the mic on.
I was just going to paint.
What's special about this town meeting is that most of our technology seems to be failing us, which is unusual. So I was going to paint a broad brush and just say that primarily it's the area on the other side of 128. So that's the broad definition of the limited commercial district. Thank you, Mr. Fettersfield. Further discussion?
Tim Gates, 2 Desmond Avenue. This was brought to my attention some time ago when the warrant was being put together. And a leading piece that I have, it was based on the kennel license requirement for dogs over four per household, but is there any chance that that could be increased by the town, or is a state law that it requires the kennel license anytime you have the dogs over four?
I'll ask Carrie Bisner if she can respond to that question. Did you understand the question?
I don't necessarily know if we would have the ability to change that. The four is specific to what is currently in the Massachusetts state laws. There is an ability for towns to make some rules of their own, but that would have to be explored with legal counsel.
I'm going to ask Town Council if she knows the answer, and I ask her that knowing that she may not. It's a pretty specialized question.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the meeting. Good evening, folks. The state law actually is a little wonky in how it's worded, and it does talk about four folks, four dogs, excuse me. So I tend to think that changing that number could be viewed by the Attorney General as being inconsistent with state law.
Thank you, Ms. Randazzo.
Sally Curry, Hidden Ledge Road. I'm also a member of the Animal Control Board. I wanted to say that historically, barking dogs have been brought up here twice tonight, and barking dogs basically does not have to do with the number of dogs. The one place that is the breeder, I have driven by over 30 times, dogs in my car, windows down, and I have not heard a thing. On the other hand, I know that the Selectmen recently had a meeting with somebody with two dogs with many people barking. The question really is, are the dogs trained? Not how many of them there are. I don't think the four-dog limit has anything to do with it. It's the behavior of the dogs.
Thank you, Ms. Curry.
I was reminded of a point that I forgot to make. There actually is a process for dealing with dogs that are too noisy in town. People can make complaints to the police. The police and the animal control officers will examine the situation, and if there are repeated complaints or complaints that rise to a particular level of noise or sustained barking, then the police can ask the Board of Selectmen to have a nuisance dog hearing, and then the animal control officer and the police can step in to seek modified behavior on the part of the dog owners. So that has not yet happened in this case. I just wanted to let people know that there is a process for dealing with particular specific noise complaints from dogs.
I have a question, Mr. Bowling. Has that process been used in other cases?
That process has been used in two cases recently, in the past couple of years, one for a dangerous dog hearing and one for a nuisance dog hearing. In both cases, the board set up an intervention with the animal control officer, the police, and the owners. One of them was very recent, and the outcome's not really clear, and the other one, as far as I know, the outcome was very positive in the end.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Shannon Erdman, Walker Road. I'm a little confused. Maybe I've missed something, but if the laws that we have in place for the kennel licenses so on and so forth are so effective, how can somebody have 20 dogs in a residential neighborhood? What am I missing?
Ms. Bisner?
How does that happen? Thank you.
It's not a question of 20 dogs, but this person has been breeding dogs.
You need to hold the mic.
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
This person has been breeding dogs, one or two litters a year. They register all of the dogs that come in, whether they're going to breed them or not, whether they're rehoming them, whether they're fosters, and then when they've left the home, they go. So it's a transient kind of thing. They do have litters of dogs. All the dogs are, in essence, spoken for in advance. They're not living there. They have a couple pets of their own. It's an allowed activity. They met all of the inspection requirements. They've met all of the licensing requirements. They've done all of the paperwork, everything you need to do. They've been very cooperative with the animal control officer.
Thank you, Ms. Bisner. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am strongly, oh, Jim Bacon, 73 Forest Street.
Thank you.
I am strongly in favor of this measure. I happen to live in the same house that the proposer does. A lot of the defense of not having the wording changed in this has, I've heard tonight, has to do with that we have the ability to control multiple animals in houses, that I think I heard somebody even say that a lot of barking is not a problem. All I can do is paint a picture for you, and this is not, you know, we have a neighborhood, very quiet, peaceful, modest neighborhood, and by having an unlimited number of animals barking in unison, I have to paint a picture for you what this is like. Imagine across your property line, 20 or 30 dogs roaming around, barking in simultaneous measure. You know, the reason that Gillette Stadium wants more than one spectator in the crowd is to make a large amount of noise. 20 dogs barking simultaneously, and the manager of the dogs coming out screaming at them, trying to get them to stop three times a day. Just imagine that happening next door to you. And again, we're not, we love dogs, we've had golden retrievers forever, and we have tremendous empathy for people who have lost family members. We have lost family members. There's a principle in American democracy that people are entitled to all of their freedoms until their freedoms are impinged upon, or until what they're doing is impinged upon other people's freedoms. So it's just, we, our experience has been unfortunately that the Animal Control Board and the Selectmen and the police, they have better things to do. Certainly, the police have better things to do, more important than run around. You know, dogs don't bark by appointment. They don't wait until the police to come by to start barking. The problem is, if you call the police, and we hate doing it because their time is much too valuable to be spent on this kind of thing. If you call the police, they come by, and by the time they get there, guess what? The dogs have stopped barking. The police leave, and then they start barking again. So that doesn't, it just doesn't work. And I don't know, maybe the Animal Control Board needs more dogs to manage, and that perpetuates their purpose in life, but I'm sorry, it doesn't work. And the reason, if you look, if you take the trouble to read this.
Mr. Bacon, I wonder, you've gone over two minutes, so could you wrap up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you very much.
Take a second to wrap up.
We appreciate your vote in favor of the measure for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Connie Sullivan, 11 Hickory Hill. I'd like to move the question.
Thank you. Is that seconded? If you're in favor of the motion to cut off debate, please raise your right hand with a red card in it. Thank you. If you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion for the previous question prevails by more than two-thirds. Okay. So if you're in favor of Ms. Bacon's motion, does everybody understand what we're voting on? Okay. Ms. Bacon's motion would add to the existing language in Section 28(c)(2) of Article 10 of the general bylaws this sentence: A kennel license shall be issued only to establishments located in the limited commercial district. And since a kennel license is required to own more than four dogs or to keep more than four dogs, it would apply in residential areas and in the general district to limit the number of dogs to four. You wouldn't be able to get a kennel license there. Is that clear to everybody? Okay. When the red light, when the green light goes on, excuse me, when the green light goes on, please press 1 if you're in favor of Ms. Bacon's motion, and press 2 if you're And Mrs. Bacon's motion does not prevail. The vote is 119 yes and 164 no. Article 9 is an amendment to the general bylaw to limit hours during which certain noise-making activities take place. I hope you'll stay with us because we need to keep a quorum, and we're very near the end. We're going to move to pass over Article 10, so that will move us right along. That's just a heads up. Eli Bowling moves the article as printed in the warrant with four changes. So you should be looking at what's in the warrant articles because there are four relatively small changes, which I will read. In Section A, in the definition of heavy equipment, following the words tractor, trailers, his motion would add rock tumblers and rock crushers. In Section C, in the third line, delete the word "Saturday" and insert "Friday" and add the words "and" to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday. So the effect of that would be to limit the noise generating activity to the hours of 7:00 to 6:00 on weekdays and 8:00 to 6:00 on Saturdays and on Sundays and federal and state holidays. Those activities wouldn't be permitted at all. In Section D, change the first paragraph to read in its entirety: The police department shall be responsible for the enforcement of this bylaw. So enforcement would be by the police instead of by the building inspector. And also in Section D, change the second sentence of the second paragraph to read in its entirety: Violations of this bylaw shall be punished by fines established by the Board of Selectmen. So instead of specific fines, the motion would delegate setting the fines to the Board of Selectmen. Tom Kehoe seconded the motion. Now, does everybody understand the motion, including those changes? Everybody clear on that? Okay. Board of Selectmen recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this.
So of late, the town has been receiving increasing complaints regarding construction noise, which has prompted us to bring Article 9 before you. This article represents a compromised position between a comprehensive noise ordinance and what we have now, which is essentially nothing. Some years ago, the town considered implementation of a more comprehensive noise control ordinance, including decibel limitations, but decided including decibel limitations, but decided against pursuing it in part because it would put a significant burden on the police. The proposed article seeks to constrain noise produced by construction to an acceptable band of hours in the day. The meat of the article is contained in Section C, which essentially states that construction activities that produce noise are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and prohibited on Sundays and legal state or federal holidays. These hours were chosen to seek a balance between reasonable expectations of residents as well as reasonable needs of construction crews. Many crews, for example, will try to start earlier in the summer in order to give workers more time to work when the temperatures are lower. The start time for construction would cover not only construction work per se, but also mobilization. It's not uncommon for large vehicles to be mobilized prior to 7:00 a.m. to get in place at a job site, resulting in significant engine noise and backup beeper operation. Provisions are made in Section B to cover exceptions for various reasonable activities, including emergency work, snow removal, periodic home maintenance by homeowners, and municipal work that might have a good reason to be done off-hours. For example, work done in tidal zones where tides don't conform to our sleep schedules, or the paving of velvety-smooth Tux Point Road, which was done this night, done at night this summer, to avoid entirely blocking access for residents and Tux Point users, or the dredging activity currently underway in the harbor, which is operating under a specific set of time constraints. The rest of the article is dedicated to definitions and legal framework. The Board of Selectmen asks for your yes vote on Article 9.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Is there discussion? Mr. Putnam?
Hi, George Putnam, Forest Smith Point Road. I applaud the motives behind this warrant article, but I would like to amend Section C to have the hours, the 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., all six days of the week. Many of us have been greeted at five minutes after seven for weeks on end by a very loud rock crusher-
Excuse me, Mr. Putnam. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
...by a very loud rock crusher, and there are numerous other instances around town of loud construction work beginning very early in the morning. While most of us who work are up at 7:00 o'clock, there are also many house guests, children, infirm people for whom it is a real hardship to be greeted by these excessive noises at 7:00 a.m. six days a week, or five days a week now, and we believe that it isn't reasonable, and it is a hardship on these people, and it's not a hardship for the contractors to begin at 8:00 o'clock, and they could run a little bit later in the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam. Mr. Reed?
Well, Reed, 12 Forest Street. As the owner of the town's only full-time pile driver, I totally, totally support this and the amendment of Mr. Putnam. I, too, have risen at 7:04 all summer listening to a hydraulic rock hammer, but I would like to ask one thing. In Section B, definition F, I'd like to have a clarification of the temporary and intermittent and occasional use of homeowners' domestic power on these weekend days, if possible.
So the question is, can you, Mr. Bowling, can you explain that? Mr. Reed, it seems everybody was interrupted. Could you repeat that, please?
Certainly. In Section B, number F, or letter F, the temporary and intermittent and occasional use of a homeowner's domestic power equipment, I would like a good, clear definition of when someone can mow their lawn or do what they have to do on a weekend. Some people work six days and only have the Sunday. It seems a little thin, and it needs to be more encompassing as to what it is, is all I ask.
Mr. Bowling, can you address that?
So you're looking for a very specific definition of temporary. Temporary is, it's intended to provide people to have a reasonable amount of work that they can do on their house after hours or on the weekends, and domestic power equipment, you'll see says it's, examples included but not limited to chainsaws, plugs for those power tools, lawn and garden tools, so they're, they are already excluded from this, so people can go about their regular business for doing basic home repairs and lawn maintenance without infringing on this article.
So I'm gonna take further discussion, but I want to explain the reason that we've all been interrupted temporarily, and that is because, as originally drafted, what you have in the warrant article under Section D says that this bylaw may be enforced through any lawful means in law or equity, including but not limited to non-criminal disposition pursuant to general laws, Chapter 40, Section 21d. And Town Council has just pointed out that when you adopt a bylaw that includes the non-criminal disposition procedure, the bylaw itself has to specify the fines, and therefore the proposed amendment, the proposed motion, which includes fines to be set by the Board of Selectmen, may run afoul of that statute, and the Attorney General may, in the end, require us to clarify it. Town Council's advice is that we simply proceed with the motion as I read it for Mr. Bowling, and if we have to, if we encounter a problem with the Attorney General's office, we can fix it in April. So that's what we're gonna do. Yes, sir? Richard Blau, 25 Harbor Street. I don't really want to comment on whether you want to control the hours so much. I'll leave that to other people. But I would point out, as I think Mr. Reed said, if you look at the definition of domestic power equipment as written, it says electrical battery or generator-powered equipment intended for areas, et cetera. Now, my lawnmower runs on gas. I would like to, again, I'd like to amend this simply to say that a homeowner's use of domestic power equipment is always okay, and that domestic power equipment includes gas-powered lawnmowers, chainsaws, unless that's what generator-powered equipment means, in which case, it's new for me. Mr. Bowling?
One thing that I would like to point out is that this, Section C specifically says the operation of heavy equipment, pavement breakers, or pile drivers at construction or demolition sites. So unless your house is continuously a construction or demolition site, it's not going to be affected by this.
Mr. Moderator? Could you, could you repeat that? I don't think I understood it.
Section C says that this applies to, this article applies to the operation of heavy equipment, pavement breakers, or pile drivers at construction or demolition sites. So unless your home is a continuous construction or demolition site, you are not going to be covered by this for operation of your lawn equipment and the like.
The other, the other point that Mr. Blau raised was, does, does the definition of domestic power equipment, I guess specifically the word generator-powered equipment, does that include gasoline-powered equipment? That whole definition doesn't apply. It's superfluous.
Gonna have to ask Town Council if that definition does in fact cover that.
Town Council, Michelle Randazzo.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So I think, just to follow up on Selectmen Bowling's point, the reason for the inclusion of what is a domestic power equipment is meant to distinguish it from heavy power, of heavy construction equipment, which, as the bylaw indicates, would be what is limited by those hours, okay? If you want to throw gas in, if the moderator would accept that addition, I don't think that it substantively changes what the bylaw is intended to target. You know, I don't operate the lawnmower in my house, thankfully. My husband does, so I can't tell you whether or not a generator-powered equipment includes gas, but I think certainly the intention of that definition is to let folks know that their personal home use of the normal type of equipment that we use, weed whackers and lawnmowers and such, would not be covered by this bylaw.
Okay, so let's, let's try two things here. Mr. Bowling, will you accept as a change to your motion the inclusion of gasoline-powered equipment in the definition of domestic power equipment? Okay, now, the second, the second point that I think both Town Council and Mr. Bowling were making is that Section C limits the operation of heavy equipment, pavement breakers, pile drivers at construction or demolition sites. It doesn't limit the use of domestic power equipment. So the, this bylaw, as it's written, wouldn't limit the hours of operation of domestic power equipment at all. Mr. Blau?
Well, I guess I have two questions, then. One is, first of all, construction here is determined as, it's so broad, I don't want to be too lawyerly, but it's so broad it could include anything. And you'd have to ask, why is, if that's the case, why is F there at all? It begs the question. If you just went to use of homeowners' domestic power equipment at the owner's residence is excluded, that would make me feel more comfortable, because I think you could define construction to be anything you do on your land under that other clause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blau. Further discussion? Yes. Would you wait for the mic, please?
Catherine Newhall, 16 Smith Point Road. There's been a lot of heavy construction on private property in the last few years, 20 years, and every year it's a different house, and it's terrible for the near neighbors, and the near neighbors are many of us. And somehow or other, they're getting away with it, so to speak. They can do this heavy thing, and you can't be outdoors in your garden, you can't be having lunch in your porch. The noise is terrible. I went to Town Hall about the decibels, the noise from across the street when they're putting in a driveway through a ledge, and they said they couldn't do anything about it. That was it. I had to endure it. I, I really think we should do something about the noise level. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Newhall. Mr. Rossi?
Alfred Rossi, 89 Bridge Street. I have a little problem with, not with the noise as it's written, except for the owner use of domestic equipment, so forth. I know that I moved into town in '69, and one of the things that's, in this town, is becoming extinct is affordable housing. The only way I was able to get into this town was to finish the house myself, and working on an eight-to-10-hour day, my work hours in the house were 8 and 9 o'clock at night till 1 or 2 in the morning. I was always trying to be very careful about power saws and that sort of thing, but I'm sure I deserved neighbors a little bit at the time. When I moved into Bridge Street, it was the same thing. I couldn't afford it, if I had to have someone come in and do it in the daytime. I don't think we should really keep anyone from a do-it-yourself project renovation from trying to get a home.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Ms. Melish?
Sarah Melish, 11 Bennett. My question is, is landscape work covered by a building permit? A lot of the noise we have, we spent two months with heavy trucks running up and down Bennett Street carrying loads of stone for a landscape project, but not for construction. And I didn't know if it's subject to a building permit or not.
I'll ask Paul Orlando, the building inspector, to reply to that.
Landscaping and earth, earth-clearing activities are not activities that require a building permit.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando. Mr. Jodas?
Jerry Jodas, 15 Woodcrest. I'd like to suggest that we not go into the detail of whether it's gasoline, or diesel, or propane, or whatever. Let's just keep it the way it is, domestic power equipment.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Bowling has already accepted the addition of gasoline as part of his motion, and I'm gonna allow that. Yes, sir?
Doug Hotchkiss, 4 Proctor Street. I think that this warrant here is a step in the right direction. Definitely, construction, domestic construction in town has increased over the last few years. I've been living down on Proctor Street now for 10 years, and certainly stepped up down there. As we noted earlier, we've been dealing with a rock hammer going on there for the better part of a year, and I think other people in town have heard it also. That thing is so loud that if you walk by there, a lot of people walk that every day for exercise, you have to put your hands over your ears, otherwise your hearing will be damaged. I think that this warrant needs to be taken back to the Selectmen and worked to make it even stronger, to do, have some limits on the decibel levels of sounds, the continuation of it over a period of time. What's been going on down there is definitely hazardous to one's hearing health, and I have hearing aids, so I know that for sure. Also, the parking of all the construction materials, the heavy trucks going up and down the streets are tearing them up. We need to take a whole look at this whole construction situation and set some sort of limits on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keough?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I believe the article that's before you with the small amendments that are on it is a great place to begin this work. Some of you were here probably 25 to 30 years ago when Selectmen Crosby stood up and talked about noise ordinances, which would have required decibel meters being carried around in the police cruisers. We do not have people in town who can go around and check decibel meters. We have to establish broad guidelines of what we will accept and what we don't accept. In my opinion, what we've done here is we have established those broad guidelines. We've had a couple of amendments to it this evening, and I would ask you to support the article as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Yes?
Sarah Creighton, 37 Proctor Street. I echo Mr. Keough's point that this is a good place to start, and I'm, I'm not gonna reserve, I'm gonna reserve judgment on whether the, we should accept Mr. Putnam's amendment or not, but I would urge you to pass this bylaw. When we built the high school project, the hours of construction were set by the special permit as consistent with the hours in this proposed by law. permit as, um, consistent with the hours in this, um, proposed bylaw change. And repeatedly, neighbors called us and called the, the school committee, the school building committee, and the police when the work started earlier than was allowed by the special permit. And repeatedly, the police said that they did not have the tools to fine the contractor, and we urged the contractor to start later and so forth. So, um, this is a tool that gives the town, um, tools to enforce the hours in special permit in the earth removal bylaw, and so I urge you to support the bylaw as a place to start. Yes, it doesn't deal with specific decibel levels and other specific complaints, but in terms of hours of use, it does give us a good starting point, and it's absent in current bylaws.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Ms. Bryant?
Alida Bryant, 57 Old Essex Road. I move the question.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your right hand with a red card in it. Thank you, and if you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than So we'll vote first on Mr. Putnam's amendment, which would be to amend section C to limit the daytime construction activities of heavy equipment, pavement breakers, pile drivers at construction or demolition sites to the hours of 8:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. If you're in favor of Mr. Putnam's amendment, when the green light goes on, please press And Mr. Putnam's amendment prevails by a vote of 150, excuse me, prevails by 158 to And now we have to vote on, on the motion as so amended. So this is the, uh, motion that I originally, with the changes that I originally read, plus the addition of gasoline-powered equipment to the definition of domestic power equipment, and as amended by Mr. Putnam's amendment to limit the hours to eight to six Monday through Saturday. If you're in favor of that, please press one when the light goes on, and if you're And the motion prevails by a vote of 210 to 11. Article 10 would create a capital stabilization fund, and Eli Bowling moves to pass over Do Nothing under Article 10, and Susan Beckman seconds the motion. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee both recommend passing over Article 10, and this is a majority vote. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote, I so declare it. And Article 11 would change the threshold at which, uh, the town is required to, to auction, to conduct an auction to sell personal property. Tom Keough moves the article as printed in the warrant. Margaret Driscoll seconds the motion. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee both recommend approval. And remarks, Mr. Fetterspiel?
So batting cleanup here, last one. Basically, we have had a, a bylaw on the books for over three decades that says that if it's a $50 value or more, we have to go through a public bidding process. Today, that public bidding process runs us about $500 or so, so it's a lost leader if we keep this limit at $50. Um, so the proposal is to replace that $50 threshold with the threshold that is under state statute. Currently, that, uh, threshold under state statute is $10,000.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterspiel. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have no doubt the motion prevails by a majority. And Eli Bowling moves to dissolve the special town meeting, and Denise Sammelchuck seconds the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote, I declare the special town meeting dissolved. Thank you all for coming and staying.